I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole for October 8th, 2024 at 6:10 PM. Attendance roll call.
Alderman Prinsen's Wolf.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Decker.
Here.
Schwer.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Kubaki.
Here.
Madden.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law on Friday, October 4th, 2024.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Old business. Continued discussion on budget items for the both 2025 operating budget, the five-year capital. This is going to be a standing item on here. Is there anything specific anyone wants to bring up?
I have something, Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to transfer the senior taxi donation to the landfill funds and then set it to pay in July so there's time for landfill to get their funds up, our landfill funds up. And if the money's not there, then we just won't pay it till it is.
So just to get this straight, you're saying instead of funding out of our normal, the normal budget to fund it from the landfill, I guess would that go into special revenues or how would we, but pay it out in July and if for some reason we're having a shortfall in the landfill, then bring it back to council for approval?
Correct.
Okay. Does anyone have a disagreement with that? Alderman, Decker?
I don't think I could support that, no.
Okay. So, all right, anyone else?
So, so we're going to move that from operational to capital?
No. To, instead of funding it through our normal operating budget, it would go into a special, be funded, they'd still get their money. It comes out of the special revenue, which would be landfill. So we're not using tax levy dollars for it. And if her proposal is to pay it out in July versus beginning of the year, and if July comes around and for some reason we're having a shortfall in the landfill that year for some reason, we bring it back to council for approval.
What are the pros and cons of doing that?
They get it six months later, but I don't see that being a big issue.
Or a chance of not getting it at all.
Yeah, there's a chance of not getting it, but I mean, it's going to come back for your approval if it's, if there is a shortfall. I guess it'd be, if we're having a shortfall in the landfill that would warrant it, I mean, then you're going to have to make choices over stuff that we need to operate versus a donation to a organization in Mesquite that provides a service for our seniors and disabled.
And my big concern has always been that it's coming out of tax dollars right now. And I haven't asked my constituents if they want their tax dollars to go to this. We take it out of the landfill funds, that's not the case.
The only dilemma I have with that is that if they, if we vote not to give them any money next year, it's really like not a notice of trying to get them to wean off us paying them. That's the only dilemma I have with this scenario.
So is your goal to wean them off of it or?
I don't know. I mean, if we don't pay them, they're weaned off it, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So I mean, in full disclosure, last year we did, their funding was $15,000 a year. Last year in the operating, I weaned it back to 10,000 as a priority of where we need to spend money.
If I remember right, from what Karen said during one of the meetings is that some of the grants that they do apply for do require.
Municipal participation, and that's true.
Exactly.
They require what, I'm sorry?
Municipal participation.
Yeah, funding from the community that they're in.
Oh.
Some sort of funding. So it does help them with some of their grants and.
Hmm, that's interesting, I remember that now.
And that's not uncommon. I mean, most, most communities that I talk to about some kind of transportation system of some sort that helps disabled or elderly have some sort of budget line in a budget. You know, we're just fortunate to have another funding source that we could probably use that from. I have no objection to it either way. This is 100% your call.
Sharon has a question.
Yes, Sharon.
Under.
So it outlines basically what we can utilize.
Okay.
This may not be there.
So, okay, so let's continue our discussion the way we are right now with the caveat that Jeff's going to have to read the landfill agreement to make sure we can even do it that way, but let's pretend you can do it that way for now. And then if we can't, we'll bring it back. Because I don't want to, I mean, we already got it on the floor, we're talking about it. So let's finish our discussion. Everyone okay with that? That we continue the discussion? Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Decker doesn't support it. Do you not support the funding of it at all or do you not support the transfer of paying for it with the landfill?
It's more the transfer.
Okay, fair. I just wanted to know where you're coming from.
Fair, fair question. Yeah, I, I don't have anything against the taxi service at all. I, I think the funding should stay where it is.
Okay.
I, I don't like the idea of the landfill being tapped into as some, you know, because I feel that if, if we do that with this, we might start doing it with other things.
There is, there is a limit as to what we can do with that funding. And unless you've already talked to your constituents, it's the tax dollars. You're giving the senior taxi tax dollars that your constituents haven't said, yeah, sure, go ahead, you can do that. This landfill money is meant for improvement to the city. It's meant for improvements to the city and that could be to a park, it could be to just different things to improve the life in the city. I think senior taxi is improving the life of the city, in the city.
I agree with that comment. I think they are, they're providing a great service to the city that is needed for a good number of people. The question I have, has there ever been a shortage in the landfill fund?
Shortage, no, but like during COVID, it's gone up and down and like, well, I wouldn't even say during COVID, it actually went up during COVID because everyone was buying stuff and then throwing away the boxes and everything else. It went down right after GFL bought it because they split the company into two parts. Part of it went to waste management, part went to GFL. The commercial part of it and their sales reps went to the part that's not GFL. So the, until GFL's sales reps got up and were selling, you know, to businesses and other communities, we had a dip in money that year. Not, I, I wouldn't say, well, it was significant, but I mean, it didn't change anything we were planning on doing, but it, I mean, it did go down. It is at a high now because the expansion and there's less and less landfills out there. So this one's getting a lot more and they've picked up a number of municipal contracts in the area also, so.
Now, now just to clarify, the only real thing that is in that what we have to do is 20%.
I'm not, I, I'm going to have Jeff read this tomorrow.
No, I'm saying as far as what Eileen was talking about, I think it's 20, 10% for conservation and 10% for community and then.
Oh, and then the rest.
The 80% is discretionary.
We got to read what that 80% discretionary, that may even have limits. I don't want to have Jeff read this.
But I'm just saying, but basically it's an 80, 20, just rough numbers.
Yes.
But I, I just want to clarify what you said. I mean, there is restrictions, but it's only.
There's some conservation, there's some parks, there's, yeah, there's, they have, they have spelt out things that you have to use a certain percentage for, but there is a.
And we've been using it pretty much for, for what you said, but.
So.
I have, I have a question. When did we start donating to senior taxi?
About 2002, 2003, when they were formed.
Well, I think it was 2005 or '06. It was.
I was on council when it.
Right.
But I was gone by 2004.
Oh, you were. So I would say then 2003. It was, and I know we started it, it was supposed to be the, the money that we gave them to get go, I think we gave them like $8,000 to start up.
It was 10.
Oh, was it? Okay. And then we said, we'll give you 5,000 a year until.
They're self-sufficient.
You're self-sufficient.
Yeah.
But.
Well, and, and the reason I'm asking is I personally think it's a great service. I don't use it or, but I donate every year, I go to their benefits. I think it's a great service, but I'm just not sure that we should be helping fund it. That's just my question. I'm just being honest. I feel like there's so many worthy causes that.
But by not funding it, I think we're sacrificing some of their grant money.
I don't know. I think we'd have to look into that.
Have to ask them.
I don't think that's the case. They get so many, they, they, I think they honestly, I think it was a great thing maybe to help and start off, but I think they do very well now. And I know, like I said, I'm, I'm a big supporter of them, but I just, I go back to Eileen's comment that our community didn't necessarily okay us giving their money to, there's so many great, I think, great services. So that's where I'm coming from here. I think this is something that we should really relook at as far as giving them anything. I'm just going to put that out there.
Well, maybe we need to do a review with the senior taxis with, between the city and them.
You want, do you want them at?
I don't know what you'd normally do. I don't know how it's handled internally.
They come in every year and they talk to me and, you know, ask, you know, are, am I going to put it into my proposed budget? You know, like last year when they came in, I told them that my proposal was going to be to lower it. They wanted it back up higher than, and they understood why. They were, they, you know, they didn't make any big deal of it. They would, they were disappointed.
But if they are self-sufficient, as she says, they're doing well.
Well, doing well, I mean, they are, they're, they're a nonprofit. So, you know, doing well, what does that mean?
And, and the grant side, I mean, those are some things we got to look at, so.
Yeah. I mean, they have costs and like everyone else, they have vehicles that, you know, unexpectedly die on them and, you know, their, their, most of their funding is not coming from us.
I have a meeting with them coming up later this month. I can ask to see if that's, you know, definitely the case. I don't know if that would help or just have Karen get in touch with you or.
Well, for the purposes of having something ready to talk about at the next meeting, besides Alderman Decker and maybe Alderman Schrader, I'm not sure if, if we, if we're going to keep it in, are you guys okay with doing that transfer? If we can't?
I'm just glancing at this. I'll look at it for sure tomorrow, but I don't think you're going to be able to do it out of here.
Okay.
Just glancing at this.
You don't think we're going to what? I'm sorry?
I don't think you're going to be able to do it the way Alderman.
Oh, transfer it into land fund?
I don't think you're going to be able to pay it. I think Sharon's correct on this. But I'll look at this closer.
I think when it comes to grants, I was always under the impression they need, needed our money to get grants, but that's not the case.
I've been told that's the case, but I.
That's what I was told as well. I can double check again at the next meeting. I think it's the 22nd or 24th.
Okay. Well, if not, then Alderman Schrader's comments are valid.
I can reach out to the senior taxi this week and send you guys a memo on what I find out.
Okay.
All right.
Is Karen still?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Is your committee, you're on committee?
There is. Yeah.
Any other discussion on either one of the budgets or questions?
On, on either one of the budgets?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I have a question. I'm going to find my paperwork as I'm moving this around.
In which, operating or capital?
Um, it's under the road program, so would that be?
That'd be capital.
That'd be capital?
Oh, possibly, no. Road program, operating, yes.
Operating and I guess the general fund too. I guess I could start with the general fund. You know, I'm not an accountant. I don't know what I'm seeing, what I'm looking at here. But I see the one-time, I don't know what you call it, one-time.
Funding source?
Funding source, one-time funding source. I see there's four things going into that for a total of 307,681.
What specifically are you referring to?
Uh, I don't know. Just refuse, recycling, water, sewer, surplus funds and TID.
He's looking at a separate page and it's not in.
I just put some notes together.
Do you know, can, yeah, can you tell me what page you're looking at in the?
Uh, I, I don't know, but you, you do have a one-time source put in. You even mentioned that in your, in your thing and it's 307,000. And I'm going to go back to, back in October meeting of 2020, I wanted to do a one-time source and I was told that it will create a shortfall for next year. So if we do this 307,000, next budget will start off at negative 307,000.
So let me, first of all, let me check your math. Okay.
So you got 50, 72, 94, and 91, 91, 681.
And I guess if you're, you're looking at something specific and you just tell me where you got that so I can look at the same thing?
I just got it written down as refuge, water.
Somebody give you that or where did you?
Did you, do you know what I'm talking about, Sharon? You do? Can you, I'm not a, I don't know. Maybe you can explain it better to me.
At the last, you'll have to turn it on, Sharon.
But like I said, I, I believe that that's going, if I'm not, if I'm right, that's going to create a shortfall of 307,000.
Yeah, at the last call meeting, he had asked some questions on landfill and funding and so on. So he had just asked about.
You gotta get, you gotta, I can't hear you, that couldn't.
Can you hear me at all? Hello?
Not at all.
It's on, you just got to hold it closer and talk about it.
Okay. So at the last call meeting, Alderman Wolf had asked some questions on landfill and also budget adjustments and so on. So on page nine is what he's referencing is, because the mayor had read his memo about one-time funding sources. So if you look at the other financing sources, there's a transfer or prior year's surplus funding, $94,000. There's a transfer from, let's see here, the, I think I have the wrong title on here.
94?
Yeah, it's 91,681.
Yep, those are the two I saw. Yep.
And then there's reimbursement from water, sewer, refuse, recycling. So within those is water and sewer is 72,000.
Yep.
And the recycling is 50,000. So those are typically emergency funding. And so what the concern is, I believe Alderman Wolf, is these are one-time funding sources and in the past you had brought that up, correct?
Yeah, I was told that it's not responsible budgeting and that'll create a deficit for next year. And when you go back and look at the call meeting from October, I think it was 10th of 2020, Kevin, you even agreed with that and pointed it out along with the mayor. So I, I think that we should take this 307,000 out of the budget.
So the 300, actually it's not. Okay, so let's go through this because Sharon just threw numbers out and didn't really give any context behind it. The use of surplus funds, the 94,000, so if you look at your budget, by Gatsby rules, we have to in the last, let me find the budget line.
Missing one here. What's the other one? 50, 72,000.
So on page 26 of your budget, the third from the bottom line item, contingency, 5.5% of budget minimum, 94,000. So that's a contingency fund that we have never used and we never planned on using it. So to fund that, instead of tax levying something that we never have used and don't plan on ever using, I'm just carrying that 94,000 forward every year. Okay? So that would make sense.
What, what page, 26?
Page 26 of your budget.
I can't find the number out here, 94,000.
On the bottom? Let me know when you're there.
I don't see the 94,000. How far down? Under other?
It says contingencies.
Oh, contingencies. Oh, I got it now.
So go all the way over and it has 94,000.
Okay.
So that is a contingency amount that we have to have in there for Gatsby rules. We're required to have it for.
What do we, what do we have it in there for?
It's, it's an accounting rule that you, you should, and bonding, and I mean, you should have it in there. It's a contingency in for, in case your budget has a shortfall for some reason. We've never used it, but we have it in there every year. So instead of levying taxpayer dollars every year for something that we don't use, we're just carrying that 94,000 forward every year. So that makes sense in any, at least in my book. I mean, you guys can do what you want, but that is a, I don't look at that as a one-time funding source because it's not a, it's not a source that ever gets spent.
Well, I, I had the same dilemma when I asked for the 190,000. It was the same thing.
Something that never gets spent? And you were, and you had a fund?
It was sitting in, it was sitting in there and we said, we need to keep that for the future.
Yeah, I guess I don't know specifically what you're referring to, but I'm just talking about something that's really a line item in there for.
Okay, well, that's 94,000.
Right. Yeah, so, so let me go through these, okay? So that, that's 94,000 of that one. The, I'm still trying to come up with your 300. I don't have that.
91, what is that?
So I got 94, 91, 65.
And 50.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
72.
91, 681.
Yep.
That, I would agree, is a one-time funding source.
And we're, and that's coming from.
That's coming from a close out of a TID.
Oh, out of the TID. And that's, that's what I wanted to do last time is pull the 190 out of a TID.
Oh, trust me, if I had a choice in this budget, I, I don't want to do this either, but it's a way of funding it.
But I was lectured on how bad it is for budgeting.
Yep, it's not ideal.
So, so why are we so far off on the budget?
Because we don't have revenue to support the added inflation that we get every year. Our added revenue is, is limited to net new construction, which is 1.82% and costs go up more than 1.82%. And a 1.8 this year is more than we've gotten, it's more than we've gotten since I've been here. We've got it as low as 0.82%. So that's our new money every year, but our costs go up a lot more than that. So we make cuts every year. So right now we're at bone. So you have a choice. You're going to either cut services, which you can do.
Well, that's, I, I did send a request out yesterday.
Yes, and there's a memo explaining where, what we did so far and the rest of it. And, and, and I gave a couple of options in there, but the rest of it is cutting services.
Is it possible to, I didn't even get a chance to go through this memo. Could you read this and get this on the record? Do you mind reading this?
Yeah, I do. I'm not going to go through a, through-page memo. It's in front of you, it's been emailed to you, goes through.
But can't it be in public record?
It's a public record. It's a memo to you. It's already a public record. I'm not going to waste our time reading through this. It's not going to change anything.
Well, I'm respectfully requesting it to be read into the meeting.
I'm respectfully saying I'm not doing it. So.
Okay.
We can add it to the packet so it's part of the record, I mean, it's part of the minutes, but I'm not wasting the time going through this. I want to get to our, our further discussion as far as.
Well, I don't think it's a waste of time.
Alderman Schrader, let me finish. I want to get to the rest of the, the philosophy in here. So if you guys want to make cuts, that's fine, but you got to give specific areas you want to cut and what services you want to do. We can't just pull out, you know, a certain amount out of the budget and then say it's wrong because that, that has consequences. So I gave you a balanced budget. It's not the ideal one. I've said that from the beginning, I said it in my memo, but it's what we got and now it's your, so I gave you my budget, the one you approve is your budget. So if you want to make cuts, you make them. Alderman Decker?
Mr. Mayor, do you have a sheet there that you're looking at right there in front?
Yes, my notes.
Oh, I don't have that.
You're right, because they're mine, because they're my notes.
These are my notes.
Some notes I took.
Yeah, these, this is just stuff I was going through and trying to find.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm going to go back to what I said. Back in 2020, I wanted to move that 190 over and I told, I was told it was irresponsible. And now we're going to move 307,000 over, which is 75 or one and a half times more. So does that make that even more irresponsible than what I wanted to do? I, I can't approve this budget with just 307,000 sitting out there that I was told at one time we should not do. And again, I'm not an accountant. I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know if I should both Sharon up here and ask her if this is something that should be done or shouldn't be done. I think, I think I asked her that we'll be throwing a shortfall of 300,000 next year starting the budget.
Possibly.
Possible. It's right there, 307, 681.
No, it's 213, 681, but yeah.
213?
Yeah, I just added it.
Because you took off the.
I took off the 94,000.
The one-time source that I wanted to move over.
No.
Well, even the TID, which is 91,000, is real similar to 94,000. I wanted to do the same thing with 190 and, and I was, like I said, I'm going to go back and tell me I was irresponsible.
Alderman Kubaki.
Alderman Kubaki, you agreed.
With what?
I don't know, but Alderman Kubaki raised your hand up.
That it was irresponsible.
Okay. Well, anyway, I'm not that concerned about the two transfers. I, I am a bit concerned though about the, the 94,000 because that'll have to be funded next year, won't it?
It's funded every year and we never use it. So why not just take that dollar amount, move it forward every year? Or you, or you can levy for it, which is, and then throw it back into fund balance is, you know, that's what happens every year.
So next year we'll do the same thing. We'll.
If it's not used, why not just keep on moving that placeholder forward?
Okay. All right, I got that.
That, Sharon, does that seem, is that something that's really responsible government? I'm not, it's, I'm confused by this right now.
I'd just like to clarify, it is recommended by Gatsby. However, this is a resolution that was adopted in 2015. So this is everything the council had requested that we put 0.5% of the expenditures in a contingency amount, not to be offset on the revenue side. So I just wanted to clarify it's a revenue, I mean, a resolution, excuse me.
Or you, you said not to be offset by revenues?
Right. Right. So it should be an expenditure. This was a very difficult budget, so we had no choice but to use surplus funds to balance the budget. But I guess there should be other items that could be looked at.
What, is that what Rick was saying? Is this just because of inflation? Why was this so difficult? I, I'm just.
It's mainly wages and benefits have gone up considerably, contracted services, software costs, software maintenance, fuel, utilities.
All of our costs.
Because, well, and just going through, I have a list of different pages where I see things that jumped up so much and.
Sharon, don't go away.
Seems shocking to me.
And, and as I've said a couple of times, and I, it, we can sit here and go through this and I have no problem with it, but you've, you've taken notes, the easiest thing and the way to get the best answers is to put those either a phone call or an email to that a email to that department head, and they can, they will sit down and explain why something, because sometimes it's not just, it's not a cost, it's because we shifted something, we combined two categories into one or something. There's, there's, there's an explanation for every line item in there, and the best way to get it is from our highly competent experts, department heads, and they can, they know, who know their budgets intimately. So that is the best way to do that. I mean, bringing it up here, I, we can get the answers for you, but I I could have had the answers for you tonight if you would have sent that over the weekend. I could have said, here's your answer. But, you know, you can do it any way you want. I'm just trying to be the most productive in our limited time here.
I sent a request yesterday at seven in the morning.
Seven forty-five, asking for something by noon with no specifics on it.
I thought it was very specific.
Every, every, every department had, every department head except for finance came up to me and like, what, I don't get what she's looking for.
I was asking for the things that they contract, basically outsource, to see if that thing, you know, we have just, we have hired an HR person. We have done a lot of hiring and things, and we're spending a lot of money, and then they're, on top of that, they're outsourcing. It's like, I'm thinking, why are we even hiring these people if they're outsourcing so much money? It's mind-boggling to me. And I asked for them to clarify and give me more information on what they're outsourcing and how we can tighten that in when, you know, some, we're spending, I'm I'm not even sure what the HR girl makes, but to have all this additional contracting, like, what is, what is she doing? Why do we need her?
What additional contracting are you talking about?
Consulting. I I saw that, too. That's a question I have, too.
And isn't she supposed to be the HR person, be the consultant?
For what specifically? I mean, what are you talking about?
Well, that's why I wanted to.
Well, then do what I asked and asked the HR.
I sent it to all department heads, everything that they outsource to talk about it.
Very unprecise, non-detailed email out at seven forty-five in the morning, asking for results by noon.
Yeah.
People have jobs.
And I didn't even get a response from any of them, saying, we got your email, and we're, we're working on it. I got nothing.
Because I answered for you, and I said, we've already done all of that. Can you be more specific on what you're looking for?
Okay.
But this doesn't have to be.
I was specific. I can tell you.
Wait, Rob, I'm not, you you'll get recognized, and I'll let you talk, but you, this is supposed to be a collaborative effort. If you guys want to be collaborative, I I want to work with you through this, but you can't just throw out these potshots and and say, well, I asked for this and I didn't get it. It's the power of one if you're going to act that way. So you don't get the direct.
My email was not to you, Rick. It was to the department heads.
And you don't get to direct them. You, then, there was not a question there.
Answer to the aldermen. That is part of their job.
You are one of them. You're not, you're not.
My question doesn't matter if I.
It wasn't the question.
You know what, Rick?
All right, enough of this.
Rick, I work.
Alderman Wolf.
I work full-time. I'm a single mom. I don't have time to sit down with each department head for an hour every day. I made a.
Part of the job that you signed up for and ran for.
A blanket email to all of them, asking the same question for transparency.
You did not ask.
And I got no response.
There was no question in your email. There was a a requ, a demand of, I want cuts to all of your contracts.
That's not what I said. I said, show me ideas on how you can make.
Read into the record.
Read it into the record. And then let's read your response in while we're at it.
This is getting unproductive, but.
You can sit down now.
All right, I'm not going to go through this. What do you guys want to do?
Oh, wait, are are you not doing something?
What do you want to do?
I was going to ask Sharon, you know, you can stay there. I'm going to go back to October of twenty-twenty. And I'll throw you in under the bus on this one, too, because you said the same thing they did. It's not a bad thing. You told me that it's not a good thing to do. So again, I'm going to ask you, this three-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars, is that the, is that a good thing to do? No, because we're starting off negative into next year. That's what I learned from last time. I went with the flow. And now we want to do what I wanted to do back in twenty-twenty in twenty-twenty-four for twenty-twenty-five. Getting back to consultant, benefit consultants of twenty-six-thousand-five-five-five. I kind of agree with Deb that we, if you take a look at the salary, the benefits, the outsourcing, I would bet to say that our HR department is the highest-paid person in Meskego right now. When we used to do, you you can laugh. I I I don't laugh at you, Rick, when you bring up things. May, maybe, maybe you think this is a funny thing. I I take this seriously, and and you can, you can laugh. I mean, there's other politicians that laugh a lot, too. But I'll tell you that, when you look at that HR total budget, I think you reduced it thirty-eight thousand. I came up with two-sixty-two. I don't know if that's with the thirty-eight thousand down when I look at the, I, I'm not an accountant. I'm just looking at this. That's a lot of money when we were doing this in, in, in-house. And I know that when we put the HR department in, and and I'm not beating her up or 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 anything, I'm just making statements here, that we were going to review this after a while. And I'm almost confident that with doing this, we could have a city administrator for less money than we're doing a HR department. And which brings in more questions on how to reduce things, which I'm not going to get into. You can, you can read between the lines, but two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand or two-hundred-and-twenty, whatever it is, again, I'm not great with with my numbers here, because this is a lot of stuff to go through, which you present this as the mayor's budget. But once it's approved, you'll say the council approved it. So Deb is right. I'm going to ask questions and and being recognized for that. It's a lot, it's a lot to do. You're you're full-time. You're here all the time. Uh, I understand. I mean, I I I I grant you the effort and and applaud you guys for balancing a budget within one penny um, on the, on the dock, bottom line of three-eighty-three from three-eighty-two last year. But at the same time, I got to go back to two, two things. Actually, I have another thing that I want to bring up, but ten thirteen twenty cow meeting. You know, I I got a lot of questions on, on just that meeting alone came up, and and the following meeting, I got some questions. You want me to run through them all right now?
Is it a budget question?
Yeah, they're budget questions. Well, the one-ninety was, was what I wanted to put in. We're at that. We've.
Wait, 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 what, what, what cow meeting are you referring to?
I wanted to use the one-ninety as a one-time source. We're, we're doing three-forty now. So there, I'm being told by an accountant or or whatever the title is, that it's not a good thing, that we're starting off low, um, in a hole next year. But I do have some other questions about past money that I don't know what we got for it, like we, we gave.
We're talking about the twenty-twenty-five budget. That's the only thing on the account, on the agenda. So if it has something to do with the twenty-twenty-five budget.
Well, I think these costs all have gone into years. I, I mean, I can ask you about Park Arthur. We are going to have no prep cost, but I I look at seasonal help is up in here, and we have a turf manager or something. I I I don't know, and and I was told that you, you, this is your, your wording on eleven, ten, twenty, that there is no prep cost, that it'll be a hundred-thousand dollars. And it'll be a a turf fee. We presented to other people to pay a user agreement. We'll do the hundred thousand upfront with a payback over ten years. Uh, you said the life of the turf was ten to fifteen years. I I don't know if that's true or not. I don't know where any of this money is. Is it coming back into the budget? So, yeah, it it relates to today, you know? I can, I can go back and find other things, but I'll leave it on that, just on the Park Arthur. But again, we're back to the, to the three-forty. I I just can't do it, you know? It it's, it's just, uh.
Okay, so.
We're spending money, but.
All right.
I do have another line item.
Let's, let's.
I do have another line item.
That, that's fine.
I, I don't have the floor right now.
You don't have the floor right now.
So you can just say, go ahead and laugh at me again, or what?
No, you, you, we'll give it back to you, but you can't monopolize the whole night, okay? So let me.
You, you asked for where, you asked for, you asked for.
Can you let somebody else at least talk for a few minutes?
I can give you.
Or do you have a specific question in there?
You cut me off.
Do you have a specific, do you have a specific question? Okay, give me the specific question, please.
Okay, I I need to, when I'm going through this now, I'm I'm really confused, because I don't know how much the Hillendale cost us, the Hillendale Road. I, I don't, I, let me find my notes here. I mean, how much do we spend on the Hillendale Road, and and it was supposed to be the test corners at the same time, when I remember all this? We have. It's a boat launch. Here. I I see that.
Get a question out of it.
We spent.
Would you like a moment, would you like a moment to gather your, your, your question at least, and can we let somebody else go?
Well, yeah, I, can you answer how much money we spent on the Hillendale project as a total?
I cannot right now.
Versus, versus what we were supposed to spend.
I cannot, but I can get you that information.
Okay, I can tell you that it looks like we, okay, let me ask you this on top of that. The one-million-dollar road project extra money that we put, this is another budget item, that we put towards the roads, which I've been preaching about for a long time, and which kind of got me going in this direction. How much of that actually went on new roads, and how much of that went to the Hillendale project?
So the.
The extra one-million dollars.
Okay. So you want to count for where.
I, I think it looks like to me that three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand of that million went to Hillendale.
It's possible. It's part of the road program. I don't know.
Well, that's not, it was, it was not designed for that. It means that we were over-budgeted, and and we didn't do our due diligence to get that done right. And then on top of that, I see there's an extra eight-hundred-thousand dollars for land funding that got transferred over towards the Hillendale project. Am I right or wrong?
Yeah, I'll get you answers on all that.
That makes me really hard to approve this budget, because i- if we're not using the road project money that we gave an extra million dollars for to do extra roadwork, when we knew what the Hillendale was going to be with, with the test corners at five-hundred-thousand, which came in, I think, at six-ninety-nine, I, I don't know what the the rebates are, I mean, the grants are, to me, it looks like we overspent like, uh, eight-hundred and then three-hundred, a million-one. And a million-one-three, if I got that right, uh, a million-one-thirty, thirty thousand. And that goes into this budget. I mean, so we're having a shortfall. We're taking three-hundred-and-forty-thousand out that we shouldn't, but we got a shortfall because of one project alone, and then you look at the HR consulting costs, which we never had before. They look like they're, they're going high.
We've had the consulting fees since the, since twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, right around that.
Yeah, but why wouldn't we be moving someone to, we, we put a full-time person on it, and and we're spending more money.
It's a different skill set, and every community out there has one.
I, I'm not sure we're getting the bang for the buck. I, I mean, like I said, when I take a look at.
If you read the memo that I just sent out today, it does go into more detail on that, but.
But I look at this, and I look at, we could, we could have someone, uh, running the city for less money than we're doing the HR department.
Okay.
That's how I'm.
So your, your question is, you want to, essentially, the Hillendale total cost and then accounting of the.
Yeah, I want to know the one-million-dollar road project, the Hillendale and Test Corner total cost, and what the extra eight-hundred-thousand dollars for the landfill came from, because I, I, I can see this. I just don't understand it.
Kabaki, you had a question?
Are you done?
Yeah, he asked his question, so he said, I'll go back.
Um, well, with the one-time funding sources, the decision that we have to make is, do we accept that this year, or do we cut the budget? Those are the only options that we have.
Well, we didn't accept it back when I wanted to do it, and now.
Rob, you're talking about, I don't care about, but about history. I'm talking about today.
People that lectured me as a bad, irresponsible thing.
Please let him talk.
I'm talking about today. I'm talking about this budget. I don't, you know, four years ago.
Alderman Wolf, please let him talk. He's talking to the council as a whole, not you.
So that's our decision. Our decision is either accept these one-time funding sources. I, I, I accept the ninety-four. I'm not that concerned about the transfers. Uh, either we accept this or we cut into the budget. Your choice.
We, we cut into the budget because I was.
Alderman Wolf, please let him finish.
Could we have some specifics then, Rob?
Wait, no, don't, don't talk between yourselves. Talk to the council.
This is a cow. Isn't it where we're supposed to talk?
Done.
No, no, you still get recognized.
Yeah, I'm, I'm done.
Is there anyone else that'd like to be?
Yeah, I would like to be recognized on a couple of things.
Alderman Trader.
Thank you. On page thirteen, benefit consultant.
Yes.
What's the benefit consultant?
The benefit consultant is what Alderman Wolf was just talking about. That is Cunningham and Butler. They are a healthcare consultant. They do all of our healthcare benefits. Um, they're the ones who negotiate with the, um, insurance companies. They go shop at the market. They, they're the experts in the field for health insurance. Every community I know of that is not in the state insurance fund uses a consultant. I'm not saying they all do, because I don't know every community out there, but every community I have talked to and am familiar with uses a healthcare consultant. So we, it's not something we have to do, but I find that their services have saved us money. So, and more than they cost.
Okay.
We were talking about a two-point-five-million-dollar line item in our budget, healthcare. So, so making sure we do that, I'm just answering your question, and then you can continue, and I'm not taking the floor away from you. You asked a question, and it's one I can answer right now. So that, that, I think, when you have such a line, huge line item in your budget, it's important to have experts out there helping you, because when you don't, sometimes you overpay for stuff for years.
Okay, so without getting into the weeds too much, isn't that what the HR person is supposed to do?
No, they are experts in the, in, like, administering our plan, so employees can come up and ask questions on it, and they help them go through, maneuver the plan when they have, you know, like, my.
But don't they have customer service people with the plans that do that?
You have to get the plan to do that. No, eh, eh, no, that is not it. We're, the, the consultants are the ones that will come back to us. Right, right now, I'm working with them on tailoring our plan to possibly save us long-term money. They're, they, they're experts in that type of thing. They know, I, they, they are the experts in actual healthcare plan makeup. They are not the person your HR, that's not what your HR person does or should be doing.
And who did this in the past?
Sharon did it when, when we had Blue Cross by herself.
So Sharon did this by herself, and now we're paying a consultant thirty-thousand dollars a year to do this.
And I think they're saving us more money than we're.
Is it appropriate for me to ask Sharon or Johnny, do, are we saving money?
Opinion, and I'm going to have one.
Are we saving money on our healthcare? Okay, thank you.
What did she say? I couldn't hear her.
I can prepare something.
Um, can I also ask who, you compare us to other municipalities, and I don't feel that's appropriate personally.
Okay.
Who are you comparing us to that you've talked to other municipalities that are all doing this, that don't?
New Berlin, West Bend, Brookfield, I believe, uses one. Um, most communities out there I've talked to. I talk to people in other communities weekly.
I do, too.
Oh, eh, well, no, I meant like people that run, and and that's where I'm getting the question. That's where I'm, I, I mean, I mean, I was on a lead call today, you know? These are, these are questions that come up in weekly roundtables. Alderman Kabaki.
Uh, just to clarify, this is a, a response to your initial question, and I'm just reading through this memo. Uh, state health insurance plan is a plan that we use. State health insurance plan renewal this year was twelve percent.
No, the state fund was, it was over fourteen.
Or, initially, we were eighteen percent, okay.
Our plan was initially eighteen, which is UMR.
Right. Cunningham, Cunningham and Butler, which is the consultant that we pay twenty-six five-fifty-two, has a relationship with that insurance company. And due to that relationship, they reduced us to the point where we saved fifty-two-thousand dollars over the initial bid. So to me, that justifies their, their being. They, they, they basically saved us well over what their cost was.
And, um, I did ask for this to be read into the discussion tonight. I haven't had a ti, chance to go through it all. I don't, I haven't verified, I don't know. I I haven't verified or gone through or confirmed any of this.
Well, I'll just give you the numbers.
Well, I know, but again, I, I haven't had a chance to digest it, or I got it an hour before the meeting. I asked for stuff yesterday, and I got it right before this meeting.
As did I. I looked at it.
So. Okay, so that was my question, the benefit consultant. That's twenty-six thousand.
Yes.
Page thirteen. Page twenty-five, I think. Let me. I might jump around here a little bit. Oh, this one was twenty-five. This is the Rec Department, Contracted Services. Why are we going up two-hundred-and-thirty-one percent? An additional fifteen thousand or fifteen.
Line item are you referring to?
I'm sorry, um, it's from the top down. It's, it's back to contracted services.
The one ending in fifty-eight-twenty?
Yes.
Yep.
No.
No.
It goes, it's the fif, sixth line down from the top, contract, yeah.
Twenty-three thou, or twenty-two?
It's up twenty-three percent. It's.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
First of all, I, I can't answer, I can get you the answer on this, and I will, but I will tell you, everything in recreation has an offsetting revenue source. So if they're, if you're paying more for something, it's because they're offering a program that they're paying for, and then they're charging a fee which offsets that and has a profit margin on it. Okay, so this might be a new program offhand. I don't know specifically what this one is, but I can find out, but everything in recreation is based that way.
Can I ask, too, if we're going through this budget, why aren't the people here that we can ask the questions for the budget?
Asked ahead of time if you had specific questions, so we would know, so.
Well, what's the point of having this meeting to ask questions if no one's here to answer them?
You would have asked the questions ahead of time. I would have had them here or had the answer. As.
Okay.
I can have them here. I mean, but I'm just.
I think they should be here to answer these questions.
Can't hear you anything. Can you turn Alderman?
Well, I think for the budgeting, they should be here. Well, it's expensive for me to go back and forth and wait for answers, and, I mean, you want us to vote on something. We need to have questions answered. I think it's, it's. Well, I can't have a dialogue with her then. I have to have a private one. I'd like to have it in the open.
You can go on with your questions. I will get, do you have any more?
Yeah.
Not going to make it up here.
Page. Let's see here. Twenty-six, the next page. Middle of the page, professional services and economic development. Five thousand and eight thousand dollars.
Can you, uh, give me more specific which line item? Each line item ends with a four-digit number. Can you tell me which line item?
Yep.
Professional services.
Zero percent. That's a, looks like that's in every, every time, is zero percent, right?
Same from last year. Do you know that one offhand, Scott?
Is this one for planning?
Yeah. Yeah.
It's, it's economic development, is that what it is?
It's, it says a professional services and economic development.
Yeah, so professional services in case they have to use a consultant. For example, I, I know, I believe they're using it this year to finish up the comp plan with using Grave. We have it in there, sometimes we don't use it at all, sometimes we do, sometimes planning just needs to have a professional services, so we have a foothold there in there, $5,000.
We have two people in our planning department, so, I mean, we're both bare bones, so every once in a while, something will come up where we need an outside service we budget for, don't always use it, but we have to have something there in case something comes up mid-year.
I got a question on that, did it actually increase though? Because it looks like what was adopted in for 2024 is the same for 2025.
Yeah, no, it's just a.
I, I don't think that has raised up in seven years, I, I think it's been.
It's just a number that we put in every year in case we use it.
Um, yeah, I, I don't, I do not remember that ever moving up. 8,000 economic development, I know we used to, um, Adam used to give a little bit to the chamber, we put something in there that the city put in there for economic development. It's hard with economic development because when you really look at it, what really should a city do for economic development? We let, kind of like the private world to do it, that's, that number's been in there for probably since when you were here as an alderman, I don't think it's ever changed.
I have a follow-up question on that, so it looks like we haven't used any year-to-date.
Used, so. Yeah, we haven't probably used any to date.
831, yeah, so what happens that then since we budget?
So we use as much, if we go fine.
Money that's not used rolls into fund balance, it's surplus in the year, runs, rolls into fund balance the following year, so it goes in there, uh, a, a separate fund that we some, will use for like capital purchases or fund balance for bond rating, I mean, it's just, it's extra money from the year before.
So what we do right now, just how I have my stand-up meetings every two weeks, we're coming to the end of our budget, capital operating. I, I make everyone look around, if you have something to purchase, let's start planning for it to purchase, look at your budgets to make sure we use whatever we have and remember if we don't, we lose it. So then we just, it goes back, we don't spend it all the time for every budget. I bet you we won't, like this year for, I didn't have any big conferences, so I know I have a budget in there for conferences, I'm not gonna spend all the money in the conferences, it happens.
So to follow up on your que- your response, Rick, going into fund balance, can that be used to offset some of the deficit? Is that part of the 90, 94 that was mentioned or?
No, um, well, yes and no, yes. So the 94, we don't use it one year, rolls into fund balance, but in this case, I'm saying just take that 94,000 instead of putting it, just use it the next year again, okay? So that's that specific one, but that's one that, because it's just there really as a, in my mind fictitious number.
So what is the fund balance used for that?
Fund balance would, Sharon, well, we use fund balance for, we use them for capital projects, you know, like we have enough in fund balance and we'll use it towards like a fire truck or a piece of equipment the following year. Because it's not an ongoing, it's a, it's a, it's a one-time funding source. So we're using it for like a capital item that you're just buying. Makes sense?
Okay, so it is tapped into.
It's a savings account.
Yeah, okay.
It's a savings account.
Okay, um, while you're up there, Scott, I have a, it's on page 19, I think this would be you, um, the last one, contracted services.
Yeah.
The 30,000 in the mayor's budget is up 50% off of, it's for contracted services, I don't know what they are.
5820.
Yep, the last item, I thought, is it budgeted for 50%?
It's budgeted for a 50% increase.
50% increases for?
It was at 20 and it went to 30.
Which one is that one?
It just says contracted services, 5820.
And it looks like we only use it once and for 12,000 or something.
Page 19.
Okay, and that's public work, I want to make sure it's under the Public Works Administration Division, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Um, so Ryan sometimes has things that he has to use contracted services for, grinding stumps of some trees, um, if we have to maybe call in, um, like Merit Asphalt to kind of do a little asphalting work, we use that in there for that. I can, I will ask Ryan what other specific things that he does for.
So we don't have a stump grinder, we have to?
Some, some things we do not have, that we have to just, that we, we've been borrowing one once in a while, but, but I'm just giving you an example.
Okay.
I, I, I just wanted to give you an example of what we use it for. It could be a slew of things, guys, for contracted services, so.
Okay, well, and this, I guess, goes back to my email yesterday where I'm just trying to hone in on stuff that we're outsourcing and see where we can pull back a little and where the left hand's talking to the right hand a little better and we can.
Okay.
Cut our, cutting our budget a little.
Here's one, here's one example.
I get what you're doing and I, I applaud it, but I just, for clarification's sake, Scott, Chief, Brittany, did I not sit down with all of you and ask you to examine all this stuff? And we did, we made adjustments on all of this stuff. I'm not saying that we can't cut farther, but we're at the point right now where it will impact services and that's fine, but that's where, I mean, it's not like this was a, something that wasn't done. So I just want to be clear for the record on that, that I have sat down with all of them and we have pulled, pulled most, I mean, did we miss one or two things? Possibly.
Well, that's all I was asking.
No, that's.
That's why I wanted department heads to get back to me and just have a little.
Can, can I give you one example? When I gave my talk about capital, one of the things I think we requested was a new lawnmower. Remember we requested that new lawnmower and we said that we wanted that so much, we want to get rid of that truck? And what our goal was, it's gonna take a year to make that lawnmower, you know, this is kind of tough, but in that second year of our landscaping contract, we're gonna pull back those three parks. Now again, you won't see it maybe in '25, but you'll see it in '26. And, and those are some of those little things that we do to kind of look at it and, and it's kind of low-hanging fruit because the technology and the equipment got better that we can do it. So that was one of the things that I kind of talked about at Cow, if you remember that? That, that kind, that kind of concept, I guess.
That was something else that I, and I can't remember what page that was on now in my notes, the, um, I think it was the mowing service.
Yes.
And I don't have that, I don't.
Well, I'll, I'll talk about, last time we did the contract, there was three people that bid on it, Seabert, Happy Moore and another company. Happy Moore tripled their price from the two-year contract before and what we did was we worked because the surface contract, we took Seabert, was just up a little higher, we matched them with, with Happy Moore to get it. The cost to do some of that stuff has gone up with inflation, without a doubt. I do not know why Happy Moore's tripled their, their amount, but they just.
Yeah, I don't either because that's not what I heard from Happy Moore, who reached out to me many, many times when this was all happening and they weren't chosen for this and I wasn't really involved in that, but, um, it, and I can't remember what line it was, but it seems like the mowing has gone up substantially.
Correct, everyone, the three people that bid it.
And I know there was a lot of people upset that you went out of state.
They're local, they.
Well, it was, I thought it was somebody in Illinois.
Well, their headquarters in Illinois, but their guys that they bought was a company called Stan O, that's in Milwaukee, S-T-A-N-O, so. But we got three bids on it, I can show you the three bids.
But I think, I think Scott, interrupt here, I think that we have them doing more service than Happy Moore did. You had Happy Moore reduce their service at one time.
Yeah.
Reduce their cost.
Yeah, yeah.
So the price is, is higher, so.
Yeah.
So the price would be higher.
And Alderman, all due respect, but we do have people waiting behind her that want to talk, so I'm letting her go through her.
I've had my handle for a long time, but.
All right, well, you've talked already though, so, go on, Alderman Trader.
Well, um, like I said, I just, my goal, I'm with Rob here, I do not feel comfortable passing this budget in any way, shape or form.
That's fine, you just gotta come up with the changes.
With what has, this 300 or 200,000, whatever it is deficit, I feel like, I feel like we all need to pull in our belts a little and figure out how we can.
And we can do that. You just gotta tell us what areas you want to reduce services.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to have this discussion.
Good, we're on the same page, great.
It's excellent, hallelujah.
Alderman Kabaki.
We've had two solid weeks to ask these questions. I had questions about the budget, I contacted the people that could answer my questions, my questions were answered. We're asking very specific items right now that should have been answered, answered or asked over the last two, uh, two weeks. If, if there's questions about the budget, the mayor said at our last meeting to ask the department heads, if you fail to do that, you're doing it at the 11th hour and it's not fair to the staff.
Uh, I have to disagree with you.
Well, fine, disagree.
This is, this is the Cow, this is when you discuss things at the Cow and I did reach out and email and ask for specific information, which, that, that wasn't read into the record.
At the 11th hour, at the 11th hour.
No, it was yesterday morning.
All right, now, please address the council as a whole.
It was yesterday morning that I asked for some information and I was given nothing until.
Alderman Wolf, you had something earlier you were gonna say?
Yeah, I, I, I think that it's very helpful to have the department's heads here, um, we, we've always done that, we've done that since we put it in place back when myself and Kurt and Dan and Neil were on, we kind of pushed that through, just like we put the $50,000 thing in, uh, we, we put a couple, a couple other things stop caps, I mean, you know, I'll go back to the, the fire engine, that's how this all started of spreading things out longer so we knew the, we, we get a better feel for where we're going, um, I, I can go down a whole list, but the department heads are, I don't know when we stopped doing that and are we paying department heads by the, by the hours so they get overtime when they're here?
No.
Is that what I understand?
No, not department heads.
Someone brought that up, I don't know where that came from, but I just want to make sure that, uh, the reason we, we, we put the 5,000 stop cat in, so that, or 50,000, I mean, so that it came back to us, I mean, there's a lot of reasons we did this, we also at the same time put that, um, that we wanted to go line by line with the department heads here and, and I don't know how we moved away from that, but we should be doing that for transparency and I think that's, I think that's something we, they should be here so we have more questions we can answer.
I can have them all here for the next meeting.
And then, and then just so I can clarify, who's gonna answer my questions that I asked before, I mean, who's gonna, you guys got that written down?
Yeah.
Okay, and then again, I'll go back because you, you like to cut me off there because I shouldn't be talking in between other people, which is just correct.
It's not cutting you off, it's just trying to keep the meeting going.
Which is correct. And you, you, you were on the lecture side, you were on the lecture side and Sharon was on the lecture side educating me on the $190,000 that we should not use as a one-time source. Now we want to use 307,000, I'm gonna go back to that, I'm gonna stick to that, that's not responsible, I was told it was irresponsible and you all told me it and, and I learned from it, so I'm back telling you what you told me, it's irresponsible.
That's fine, guys.
But we need, we need to do something about it.
I, I agree, so you, we will go through this and you can tell us what areas you want to make cuts in.
Well, I can start right now with one that I wrote down, just going through this, is, is, uh, we should probably cut that survey fund out for next year, I don't think we need to do the survey.
Okay, but that's not operating, so, I mean, you can do that, that's fine, if you don't want to.
Oh, that's on capital?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll have to look through this, but there's, there's, there's places, I, again, when you give me my answers, I'll have more, more detail on, on why we're putting this 307,000 in when I can find reasons why that happened on, on budget money.
Can, I have a question actually, um, not a specific line item, but just for clarification, on page 53, and this may have been discussed already, but inter depart- and this is probably gonna be directed to Sharon, interdepartmental revenue.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
Just for my clarification, could you, anybody?
Like what is it you want to?
Yeah, what is the?
I'll let our department, our finance director come up and explain here.
Thank you. Um, that was put in pla- place in 2010 for emergency purposes, um, we, back in 2008, a tornado came through the city.
Oh, yeah.
And we had to come up with additional funding, we had nothing in the budget, so this was put in place if we are in a really dire straits to balance the budget, so this would apply to the refuse recycling, water and sewer utility.
And the water and sewer that I've written down for 122,000 or whatever.
So this one is not unusual, um, we have used this in the past.
Okay, so then part of my money that I have here, the 50 and the 72, i- is, is fine for a one-time source.
Not ideally, no.
Not ideally, okay, just one-time sources, okay, I gotcha.
It's really for, again, emergency purposes.
I'm sorry, what's that?
It's really for emergency purposes, if we cannot come up with any other way to balance the budget, this is what we would utilize.
Okay, so I'm back to the 307 again, okay, gotcha. As long as you're up here, can I clarify transportation aid? Well, can you tell me how that works or?
Scott might be better off.
It's, it's a somewhat complicated formula from the state based on the mile of roads that you have and the amount that you've spent the previous year on your road program.
And it's increased, right?
It increased, yes.
Yeah, by 65,000.
And we're, we're doing responsible spending on, on that money?
Yes.
It's used to offset the highway department.
What's that?
Costs with personnel, wages, benefits, salt.
It's state aid essentially.
Okay.
Basically.
That's fine.
Yes, that is not a one-time funding source, you get it every year.
Okay, yeah, and it goes up and down, it's kind of like.
It usually just, doesn't go down often.
Question that's almost related to this, just in the transparency part of what we do, I've had several constituents now and actually one just messaged me during this meeting, they cannot watch these meetings live and it's getting very upsetting that they cannot watch meetings live and.
Kathy could always just show up, but, um, beyond that, the, uh, we made a decision as a council a couple of years ago to save on overtime because we were getting all of maybe two people at most watching the meetings live and we were paying for overtime and we had it, we, we came, I came to council, explained what we were gonna do, that the next morning, these are posted online immediately, people can either come or they get the, they can watch it in perpetuity starting the next morning, so that was a decision of council.
Okay, um, isn't, is, would it be something where we could look into maybe one of us just puts a, pushes a button and has it live? I don't remember voting on that, but.
Yeah, it doesn't work that way.
I have constituents.
Does the library, does?
Library, I go to, I was at the library meetings, Brittany had every meeting live, it wasn't a problem.
Different, different setup there for video than we have here.
Well, is that something we could look into?
Well, our choice is to have a, have Jake come and sit during the meetings, we can pay him and that's fine.
He used to be here.
Right, and we decided not to because of the amount of people that were watching and the cost involved, if you want them back, that's fine.
I would like to have that motion to do that because like.
Well, it's not on the agenda right now, but I can put it on for discussion.
That would be great to put that back on because, um.
It was council's decision, I.
And I'm just asking to have it reconsidered and.
That's fine.
Have it back to being live.
All right.
As long as we're talking, just off the wall comment because emails have been requesting things, I've been seeing and we brought this up, we're, we don't edit any live things, we just put.
No, we cut, the only.
Because I seen a request that came through unedited and I, and I always, that's been in the back of my mind, why, why unedited?
The only thing that gets edited is, is, in its raw form is one long recording and all we do is break it up so it's fin- the beginning of finance, then we just cut it and post it three different ways.
Got it, okay.
Nothing's cut out.
Okay, I mean, otherwise you just.
But this isn't on the agenda, but yes.
Yeah, I, I just, as long as that came up.
Any other questions needed for the, for operating or the capital budget for the next meeting? Can you hold it closer maybe? I don't know if that's it. Are you, Alderman?
How's that?
Thank you.
Okay, I, I'm listening to this conversation, on one hand, I'm hearing all the things that we should look at cutting, and five minutes later, I'm hearing we should spend money. And then we're looking at cutting and then we're spending. I think we need to.
Didn't hear that from me.
The crux to the problem is, we're either cutting something relatively big because that's where we gotta go, or we're gonna raise taxes, am I wrong?
We're not gonna raise taxes, our tax amount is what it is. There's no raising taxes, so we levied, we were levied, we, we, we've levied as much as you can levy.
By, by statute or whatever.
By statute.
Okay.
So their taxes are not gonna go up. If you make cuts, um, to the funding source, I mean, the one-time funding source, we have to make cuts in operating, i.e. services. So I just want to be clear on that. And you, that's fine, I mean, I gave you a budget that.
Well, we got people.
That preserves the ser, the services we have, cause I think that we don't offer, I mean, we have a fairly Spartan amount of services that we offer to the public. This one preserves them, and I agree, this is not an ideal way. In my, my perfect world, we would not be using one-time funding sources. But if we wa, I gave you an option to preserve the services we have. If you don't want to preserve the services you have, the option is to take away those one-time funding sources. But that's a decision that's above my pay grade, that's your choice, because you are the common council.
And the easiest place to do that is the road program, and if we took anything out of the road program, people would kill us.
Hell, that's why I have my questions on that, cause I'm not sure where all the money was, so.
Quickly, I can come up with like 50,000, but that's it.
What's that?
Quickly, I could come up with like 50,000 in cuts, but that's it. I mean, that's.
What are they?
Get rid of the consultant, which might cost us more money down, down the line, but right now, it would save us money, the healthcare consultant, so that's 26,000 right there. Um, and there's probably a bunch of $5,000 ones, we could, um, I mean, don't want to pick on Brittany here, but she offered up different levels of service. Um, I went with the middle one, there's ones that will cut services and it's gonna get us right up to the bone on, um, paying that, that countywide library taxes, but, you know, again, we're gonna be cutting services. Um, there, there is, you know, like, I can come up with 50,000, I can't come up with 200,000. 200,000 are gonna be people and things that our public expect of us. So, I mean, I get it, and other communities have to do it. We've, this is, we, we haven't yet, we're just, we're, we're experiencing for the first time, not first time, but pretty close to one of the first times, something every other community does every year because of the state funding, um, thing on it. New Berlin had to cut $4 million out of their budget. I started with, well, I thought it was gonna be 600 and it kept on ballooning and I, really what I started this budget with was a million dollar deficit. The only way I got it balanced was by using some one-time funding sources, so.
And could, no, a million dollar deficit just from inflation?
Yep. Yes.
That's it.
That's it.
Nothing else.
Our health insurance ate up a big chunk of that.
That's a big thing, cause we, you, if I read your notes, you're down to eight and a half percent or something.
Right.
Increase, is that by the time you take whatever, down, 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 however you support it?
Right, we're down, we're at an eight and a half percent increase, which is much lower than the average.
And that's more than double what we're used to seeing, if, if not triple, for the last 10 years.
It, it, it could be, but.
Yeah.
But, but then you look at, like, I, you know, I talked to New Berlin, I talked to Fort Atkins and everything, they're all in 14, 15% increases this year. So the 8% actually isn't looking that bad. And we, we don't have, we, we, we've got some big claims, that, I mean, we need, the only way we're gonna get our health insurance changing is finding a way of to get, you know, quite bluntly, is get the unhealthy people off our plan somehow. And that's, but you can't do that. So. I mean, this, this conversation is one, I mean, it's usually a little more civil, but I mean, every community has. You know, and it comes down to, it's not, I presented an option. Now, you guys get to make the tough, tough choices in here. I, I mean, you can present, you can ask for something and I can tell you the impact on it, our department heads can tell you the impact on it, but you, you guys are gonna have to make the choices. That's what they pay you the big bucks for.
What about state shared revenues on page seven, is that?
What about it?
That's something that's up?
No, this year, it's up slightly, it's up about, I don't know.
Looks like.
A relatively minor amount this year. Last year, we got a big jump in it, everyone did around the state, so we got.
And what if?
We used it to, um, do a salary study and get our employees paid what they were supposed to, and what they are compared to everywhere else.
So that was like.
It was a much wider majority of it.
That was like half a million dollars we used?
Could be.
So as long as you brought up the salaries, which is on my list, I, I see you splitting it up, um, 2%, 4.1, 2%, 10.1.
Yeah.
Now, that is, uh, doesn't include merit raises?
Yeah, it does.
It does?
Yeah.
Okay, and?
Now, it, it doesn't include one portion, so if you remember last year with the salary study, we have, we have some of our employees that, our goal is to get them to midpoint, and there's some employees that aren't at midpoint, so instead to escalate them to get them to midpoint, the ones that are at midpoint get an additional, I think it's 1.4 or 1.6%, I don't remember, additional on top of their, their merit and COLA, until they get to midpoint, then it drops off. So that this year counts for about 70, $7,100, um, for the, for the people that aren't at midpoint. The changing of it, so, you know, typically in the past, we would give like a, say a 3, 4, whatever percent raise, um, they would get it in January. Well, to still get them their 4% raise this year and make it more budget tolerable, they're getting 2% after the first quarter and 2% after the, in, at the end, or the beginning of the third quarter, I believe. Um, it's 4.1 and October 1st. By doing that, it saves us almost $200,000. So it, it's still, and it still does right by our employees. I'm sure they're not happy about not getting a January 1, but they're a hell of a lot happier than not getting one at all. So that's our choice.
And, but the other part of my question is, um, we, we cap certain salaries when they get to a point?
Yes, everyone's got a range.
So how does that work for rate increases?
So the rate increase, so, um, and we'll, we can, we can decide that as a council at, at some point, how, before the end of the year, how are you gonna take that 4%? Are you gonna make 2% COLA, which would be a cost adjustment, which takes that range, say the range is, for simplicity, say from $10 to $100 is their pay range? And if you add, um, 1% onto that, it takes that whole range and add, and moves that range by that percentage. So that's what COLA does. The merit just moves them within that range. Okay, does that make sense?
Yeah, but what about like department heads, aren't there, they're like a, there's a salary cap?
No, everyone, every position in the city's got a salary range. So they fall somewhere in that range.
Can't they max out on their range?
They can, but everyone can max out.
What's that?
Every employee could max out on their range, and every, and there's, before we did the salary study, we had a lot of employees that were maxed out on and they had nowhere to go.
But I'm just saying, for department heads, just 2%, 2% will go to them as well and it's.
It goes to everyone.
Okay.
Except for the, except for the police union.
Right, right, and.
Which is already a, a contract.
Right, as a contract.
Yes.
Have we just, have we looked at doing, say, 3% on 4.1 and, and a 1% one-time bonus? So since it's so close to the end of the year, we're gonna do another budget that we can give a 1% bonus and, and, and come back with, uh, a new salary for the following year? I, I don't know, is that, that'll save us money in the long run. We've done this before in, in, in the city here.
Alden, Hamel.
So, since Rob brought this up, what happened to somebody's maxed out? How do they get an increase then? Is it paid in a bonus?
If they're maxed out, it, it becomes a bonus.
Okay.
Because they just get that lump sum, but it, they fall back the next year. But no one's at, no one, because we just did the salary study, no one's at the top.
Yeah, I don't think so. Another question regards to maintaining services and with everything that's going on in communities this day, these days, you know, when, I guess the best way to phrase it is, when are we gonna need to, you know, we've talked about fire, when are we gonna have to start looking at increasing the police force?
Um, last year, police chief asked for a couple, a couple people every year and I'd tell him, no, we can't afford it.
But he's has, you have the highest amount of officers that we've ever had, right? I mean, for a while there we were losing them, now we're back up.
Sure.
I mean, I don't know if it's a good point where we're at, in your view, but we're back, we're, we're higher than we have been.
While he's getting ready and before he talks, I sent out an email to all of you probably two months ago, um, Wisconsin Public Policy Forum has a website where you can look, you can compare us to every community, uh, other community and all these different categories and police spending and number of officers is all in there. So it, it's, it might be interesting for you guys at least to look at to know where we fall. Chief?
Well, uh, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I probably have bad news for you considering the context of what you're discussing here. Uh, number one, we have 41 assigned officers at our police department, we have two in training, uh, when they go through the academy, and that's due to either retirements or somebody leaving. We had an officer go to the city of Brookfield because they, quite frankly, pay a lot more than what they pay here. Uh, I have asked for, every year that I've been police chief, for additional officers. The first year, we did get two additional officers to get to that 41. Uh, it took, it's taken about a year through training and getting them through to where they need to be. Uh, we are falling behind in terms of officers per capita. Uh, unfortunately, the, the operating budget isn't there. And it's gonna be my recommendation in the very near future for a public safety referendum similar to what Germantown, Germantown is a 36 square mile community, 25,000 people. Uh, I have reached out to Chief Snow there as well. This is something that's gonna be on the horizon, uh, you know, for what we're doing. Our calls for service are increasing exponentially, our rescue calls are increasing exponentially, our traffic crashes are increasing. I have all the data to support this, uh, and this is something the mayor and I have discussions about. Uh, we're working on a plan, at least to try to get some sort of relief in 2025, but ultimately, if you pay attention to the way my shift works, 41 people, first shift, second shift, third shift to run 24/7, and you also have a detective bureau. Uh, some of the things, before I come and ask you for things, I want to just tell you a couple of things I've done since I've been chief, because I know I have to look here internally first to find those cost savings measures. The first thing I did is I didn't replace a captain, if you recall, and I turned that into a detective, therefore saving the city $30,000 to $40,000 by increasing our investigative footprint. The other thing that I did this last year is we were part of a, uh, drug task force with Waukesha County where we had an undercover person. Unfortunately, priorities are, I have more needs here at the specific Meskego Police Department, and we're turning that into a position here and not outsourcing it to the county. Unfortunately, we're just not big enough to participate in that. When I break down those shifts, oftentimes you'll see the minimums on the road at a given time is four. You know, so when I go to the community and we talk about speed or talk about those issues, I want to be thinking forward leaning of like, how do I get those to five? And that's not just one body, and that you have to understand, an officer, roughly speaking, based on salaries, about 90,000. You start talking benefits, uh, you're gonna be at 120, you know, somewhere in those, uh, that range. And, uh, it's, it's gonna come to bear very soon that we need to start thinking proactively, both with fire and your public safety, of, you know, where do we want to be? I want to maintain one of the safest cities that, um, you know, rankings that we tout here, because we all know why people move to Meskego. It's safe, we have good schools, and it's a great community to raise a family in, which I do myself. Uh, but we're gonna have to pay and make big decisions in the future. Right now, we're making it, you know, as we get through and where we need to be, uh, you know, with the budget. And I understand, uh, that this is a conservative community and we made it, make sure that we're paying attention to every dollar that's spent. But unfortunately, as your police chief, it is my duty and responsibility to come to you and say, unfortunately, in the very near future, we're gonna be asking for, you know, significant increases to combat issues that we're dealing with on a day-to-day basis. You just happened to catch Lieutenant Roszewski in our interesting day today. I hope that answers your question. It's not part of this budget, but I can tell you that the mayor and I have had conversation. Alderman Decker, you were part of that, when we met, uh, after the last meeting and we sat and we had that discussion, I gave you my write-up, uh, as well, and you're welcome to take a look at some of the statistics that I provided for this year. Unfortunately, it isn't in the operating budget, we're, we're capped by net new construction. Questions?
You, you said, what community did you say you compared to? Germantown?
Germantown I compare to specifically because they're 36 square miles.
And how many, how many officers do they have there?
Uh, they currently just increased because they passed a referendum this last year for, I believe, three more, and they're in their mid 40s if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
And I have it broken down by officers per capita, and we are one of the lowest in, in this area.
They use police aides there?
I don't know if they use police aides there, I don't know that.
I don't know if that's a question you, you need to look at it too. I, I don't know, I know some communities do, I don't know what they do, I don't know, just, just a question.
So, a quick question, you're comparing to Germantown, you said it's the same kind of footprint mile, miles, is that what it was?
Footprint from, uh, landmass.
Population too?
Population and, and land size.
Okay, per capita, per.
And quite frankly, based on geography, they have some of the similar issues. Uh, Germantown is in Washington County, just over the border, and there's a, there's a bit of creep. It's just a very decent police department to pay attention to, because we're so similar in certain terms of our communities, of both geography, size, and demographic makeup of what you're, what you're looking at. And so it's just something to pay attention to, they had to do that, and, and I know you mentioned before, I'm just gonna, the survey, uh, it might be on the chopping block, but when you start looking at a survey, those are the kind of things that you need to prep for as a survey, perhaps a marketing firm, some things that you're gonna have to spend some money on, in order to, based on the school district, in order, if you think about their referendum, okay, they had to do multiple referendums to get that passed, and they had to use marketing firms and use those things. But I will tell you, I think that the citizens of Meskego, you know, will, will back us on this and they will be able to understand that we're, we have some needs and I have the data to back it up.
And it's not just a police issue, we're gonna have to address fire and rescue.
Correct.
They did not get any of their grant, so that's, that's gonna be coming sooner than later.
Yeah, and like you mentioned, there seems to be a lot of creep coming in from outside communities that is.
I've mentioned this before, that a large portion of our crimes that are committed here aren't committed by Meskego residents.
All right.
Well, thank you, chief, I appreciate that info and, um, more information to us, the better, because there are a lot of big decisions money-wise, and that's part of my apprehension about this whole budgeting thing right now. But I, as far as that survey goes, I don't feel like we're anywhere near ready to do a survey, cause we need the information, we need what you're talking about, we need things from EMT, do we need EMTs versus, uh, paramedics? You know, we need so much more information before we can go forward with a survey, in my opinion.
I don't think anyone's disagreeing, the survey we're talking about would be for next year, and I think by the end, towards the end of next year, we're gonna have to do something like that, cause we're looking at pressing issues. Um, anyone else have specific questions on the budget that we need to get answers for? All right.
So I have a question, wha, what, when you come back in two weeks and we walk into this room and we all sit here, to be fair to you and to our staff, what do you expect? Are, do you want, do you want department heads here, are you gonna ask questions ahead of time?
I'm gonna have all the department heads here anyway.
Okay.
Yes, please.
All right, Scott?
So get your questions to him as ahead of time.
You can zoom us.
She can't, so. Sharon, do we have to pass a budget on 22nd? Does, no, the public hearing has been noticed, the passing has not. I don't believe we do, but I'll let Sharon.
Considering the elections coming up, and also we have tax roll, it could be postponed until early November, but if we can talk it through after the public hearing and make some decisions...
It's ideal to pass it by then, but we don't have to. So I'm not going to rush anything for the sake of getting it done on the 22nd. I would like to. I'd love to get this off my plate, but I'd also, I want to do it right, so...
But we could make some adjustments on the 22nd and pencil in on the resolution with any changes, and you can adopt the amended resolution.
Bring a big red pen. No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, no, that's fine, but, you know, like I said, we're not, we don't, it's ideal to do it. I'll tell you, we're ahead of almost every other community as far as the scheduling. I don't know of anyone that's, I shouldn't say anyone, but most of the communities are doing it later than us. I, we do this for a reason, reasons Sharon stated, because we have a lot of people that are in both the elections, they cross, they're cross-trained, but we're not under any gun that we have to have it done for the next meeting.
Plus, plus, I appreciate the organization of doing all that, too. So, I mean, you know, this has not been a fun budget meeting, but it is what it is, and, and, you know, things aren't always as easy to have been in the past.
No, they're not. This is the toughest budget I've been through since 2002.
And you know me, I just speak my mind, and, and if you get mad at me, so be it, you know, it's just the way it is.
Well, and if I could just ask again, anything that department heads can do to show their work or show any additional things that we're outsourcing, any ways we can pull that back in? Rick talked about maybe $50,000 he could think of right now, but I mean, I'm just asking wholeheartedly for department heads to really look at their budgets and see if there's any more, because this is a, you know, Rob nailed it when he said, this is Rick's budget, but it's our responsibility once it's passed. We pass it. So it's on...
Oh, it's your budget now?
Yeah.
I mean, it's mine up until, until last week. Now it's your budget, so...
So I would really respectfully ask that we just get a little more, and sorry, I didn't go meet with each department head one-on-one, but I thought a group email to everyone was the best course to just kind of nip this and let's all put our heads together.
I appreciate that, Alderman, but it really does help all of them, and I, every one of them, almost every one of them asked me. Specifics is what helps, because we, you're asking the same thing that we've done, and I know you mean well by it, but I mean, you really need to, like, if, like, you, these questions you asked tonight are good ones. You know, those are ones that if we send them ahead of time, we could, we can have, you could have had the answer already, and maybe it wouldn't have been a question for tonight. Maybe it was a good enough question that you just wanted it out there for the public, but you would have that answer, and that does help. I mean, they, they'll have, their job isn't to sit and do the budget. That's part of their job, but their daily routine, they have stuff they're doing. So it helps to give them time to be able to work it into their already busy schedules, so.
Well, again, and I understand and I appreciate that, and I feel like we've been working on making sure everybody gets a fair and decent salary. This is a great community to work for, and I feel like looking into their hearts and their budgets on how we can outsource less and maybe do a little more for what they're getting paid for. Point blank.
Should we be looking at maybe an additional meeting?
Well, we can decide that next week. I mean, I think we're, the goal is to try to get that done next week. Maybe we can, you know, get to the point where we're at, but I will tell all of you to start looking through, look through the budget, because to get to where you want to be, if you want to get rid of those one-time funding sources on there, there are going to be cuts. So try to think of areas that, you know, less services that you can tolerate, and ask ahead of time, please, so I can give you, at least have that department head or myself give you the consequences of, okay, if we cut here, we're losing, because in many cases where we make a cut on an expense level, there's, often there's a revenue source that we're giving up to, so you're not saving anything. You lose that revenue source, and, you know, so it's, it's a intricate budget. So try to ask that ahead of time, please. I mean, I can't implore you enough on that, because, because it really, and it's something that if we're going to even get through this in the next couple of weeks, you have to start getting in your head of, if you want to make these cuts, where? Because we, we're not going to sit up here next week, and we're going to go through the same exercise of just throwing off our hip, and that, and that is not a good idea. So please try to put some effort and, and time into this. Alderman Schrader.
Could you just, I, I know you said that revenue source, and could you just give me a, in general, what are our big revenue sources? What departments give us?
Recreation is all revenue, so they're self-sustaining, essentially.
How?
Recreation, because everything they do has a revenue coming in on it. So all their expenses, there's an offsetting revenue that comes in. So recreation doesn't really cost you anything. There is, I mean, Public Works has some revenue source, like, you know, selling culvert, installing culverts. You might look at the cost of, you know, some of the materials. Well, they sell some of those materials to our constituents when, you know, they ask to have some ditch work done or something done, so there's offsetting costs on that. There's, you know, there's a plethora of things. So I guess...
So is that maybe something where each department or heads can let me know what their revenue sources are? That could be helpful to us, too. Where, where...
If, can you just ask the question, though? I mean, if there's some area that you want to cut, can you just ask what it is, and we can tell you? I mean, it's, does everyone, I mean, does council as a whole really want to...
Well, it helps us, it would help me as an alderman to understand where we're getting revenue and where we're spending. I mean, it just would be helpful to know as an alderperson.
Well, okay, so go through the budget. Go through, go through this. There's a whole section on revenue.
I mean, there's, the library brings in, they're budgeted for 202,873 for the library system. I mean, it's right here. A library friends revenue, $5,000. It's all right here. It's itemized. I, I don't get it.
I, I understand that, but I, like I said, just a little bit more information on, like, I, I find that hard to believe, that the rec department funds itself and it doesn't cost us anything. That I find hard to believe.
We have two employees in there.
Yeah.
And a lot of, if you, if you look at the rest of the, like, all their other employees that they have are seasonal, have an offsetting, like, the daycare, or the playground that we, we do, the four, the four-year-old preschool that we have, you know, so all that brings in more than it costs us, and we use that, so it's what it is.
So, so the one-time sourcing that I've been preaching on, that's operational?
Yes.
So if you want to focus, we need to focus on operational?
Correct. Don't look, don't look at cap. Don't look at, like, we don't, we want to get rid of a fire truck or something like that. That's not, they're two separate...
We'll be ahead then. I'm just kidding.
And we don't have any, and there's no levy caps on capital.
But I'm just saying, because we have learning on the job right now.
Right, yes.
And, and I'm still learning.
And that's part of the reason why I'm asking, if you guys, if this pops in, either come in my office or shoot me an email or shoot department head an email, because it's something we can usually answer like that.
But you know, a lot of times, and that gets me to one more subject, real easy one, nothing, nothing about the budgets. We're not getting the emails on Friday anymore before the meetings. I'd like to get that, because that's kind of...
You should, did you, so we sent out an e, we sent out an email that you have to go and just sign up on the web thing, and then that's what, that's the impetus that generates you getting those emails. All right, did you plug in your text number?
Does anybody get emails? Are we doing, am I missing something?
I had to call, sorry, I had to call Barb.
Okay, just going to see Barb?
And, and she had to redo something.
Okay.
But you should be getting them, and if you're not...
I was not getting them either.
I meant to bring this up several times.
No, that's fine. You should be getting it, and I know initially she sent out an email explaining how to do it, and either you did do it or the system's not working right, or maybe...
I was in with her some time back. I'll go back in by her, and that's fine.
Just, you know, I've had to do, redo it twice.
Okay, that's, that's fine. It's just, it's not that I can't go in and look at the website.
No, but getting the email...
It's just a reminder, and we don't have much time to do this from Friday to Tuesday.
Getting, getting the emails, you should be getting an email.
Yeah, and you know, like I said, you know, we got two weeks to do this budget, you say, but we, you know, we get it on Friday, and we start going, it's not as easy as saying you got two weeks to go through and do this. I mean, it's a nice saying, but it's not that easy.
Okay. All right, anything else? You don't have, okay, it just looked like you had a question.
We still on Cow?
All right, yes, we're still on Cow. Last item, items for reconsideration. Alderman Schrader requests to reconsider a motion to tear down the old PD building referring to, referring it to Public Works for cost and information. So Alderman Schrader, you have the option of making that motion. You need a second. I'll just explain the process. I know we just did it, but just Alderman Schrader needs to make the motion, or somebody that was in the majority of that vote needs to make that motion. Anyone can second it. The discussion will then only pertain to, are we going to reconsider this? It has nothing to do with what you, you want to change on or not. It's simply asking to bring it back on the floor. If that vote goes positive, that item is now back on the floor and can be modified in any way that you, as a council, deem possible. So you could vote it, I mean, it could be completely changed.
Back and say, we want a community center?
Correct.
By bringing that?
Right.
Okay.
So right now, it is, I'll tell you right now, before she makes the thing, it is scheduled to go to Public Works on October 28th. We are working with vendors to have all the information for you at that point, as far as cost and everything else. It'll go to Public Works as, as everything goes through a committee process and come back to council as a resolution for council to vote on after all the work, the work gets done. It's at a committee at that point.
Now, let me make one point here. Did we, we applied for the grant, and we, did we get it or not get it?
No.
We did not get it?
No, but we didn't care at that point.
Okay, so, so is it worth bringing it back? That's the question.
Well, I mean, we already told this last month, well, we're getting off the subject. We'll get, let's get it, let's, if she wants to make the motion, she can and get a second, and it's up to you if you want to reconsider it.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider my previous motion on the old police building.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion, any discussion on the motion to reconsider? You want to explain maybe why?
I just want to recon, I just want to, my intention was to have, get three bids from reputable contractors and have it go back to Cow. And it went to Public Works, and I want it to go back to Cow, because that's where it started in Cow, and that's where it needs to go, to Cow to look at all the bids, not to Public Works. I put it to the wrong committee.
Any other? Alderman?
Yeah, actually, it, the discussion about the building was in Cow, but when things, when it gets to that point, it really does belong at Public Works. Public Works is going to look at it, they're going to get the bids, then it's going to go to council to talk about everything that they came up with. So council still gets it, but if we went back to Cow, what would we be talking about? The process goes to Public Works to get bids.
No, I want it back to the Cow to discuss the bids.
Alderman Hamel.
Yeah, I know I wasn't here last time, but I got to watch the discussion on it. And personally, it just seems like it's weird that we're even here today, since this should have been taken care of seven years ago under the previous mayor, when it was discussed at that time. A lot of people brought it up, we should tear it down, we should rent it out, we should lease it, we should sell it. And I think we're kind of, we kind of have tunnel vision on it right now, where we just want to tear it down. Right now, it's being used for code storage. Nobody even mentioned, I don't think, anything about keeping it as code storage, because we're in need of code storage. I think most of us agree is we're not in favor of making it additional rec space, but, you know, tearing it down and making it green space may not make sense. We don't know what the cost is. We don't know what the cost is to leave it as code storage. You know, and right now, we want bids on just tearing it down and nothing else. I think, from what I heard, it seems like we all pretty much agree. It's like the rec center's not, or not even a rec center, additional rec space, I should say, is off the table. I think we all kind of agree on that, that we don't want to do that. But this is something that should have been done seven years ago, or when the new city hall and PD was up. I think it should probably be sent back to Public Works to be discussed, to see what all the options are, what the costs are, to see what is the most viable and makes the most sense.
Okay, well, with all due respect, my bid, or my motion is just to get quotes on tearing it down. It's to get information.
Then what? Then we send it back to Cow, or to Public Works to discuss the other options?
It goes, goes to Cow for discussion, for all of us to discuss, not just three alderpersons.
Right, and then what happens if, then?
Then we can vote on Cow and decide, and it goes to council.
That doesn't make sense, because, you know, there, there is a decision that needs to be made. You know, right now, the decision is, do we tear it down and get three bids? Like I said, there's, could be also a decision in there to keep it for code storage, since we need code storage. I think it needs to go back to Public Works to weigh everything, get the estimates, the costs and everything, and then send it back up.
Who's Public Works?
Alderman Schwer, Alderman...
I know it's not me.
I'm an alternate. It's Kubaki, Madden, and Schwer. It's three alderpeople.
It's Madden, Kubaki, and Schwer.
That's what I said.
Yeah, yeah.
It's three alderpeople, and I'm an alternate. Why wouldn't we want it to come back to the entire council?
Well, because we do, we have a committee process for a reason. I mean, it's just the way we, we do everything through a committee. Otherwise, why do we have any committees? Just bring everything to Cow.
You know, we've had stop signs and no parking signs go through Public Works. That's a minor deal compared to what's going to happen to the old PD. You know, it's, I, I think we're being very short-sighted here, and it needs to go back to Public Works and have it discussed, and then bring it up to us. And if we don't like it, what they send up to us, we can vote it down.
All right, for now, we're just, you're just voting on if you're going to do, if you're going to reconsider her motion. This is not about sending it anywhere. You're, you're going to either reconsider her motion, or it just stays where it is, which is Public Works.
So, and if it goes to Public Works, it's about getting quotes to tear it down?
The same stuff. It just goes through our committee process. Yeah, and you could, it's a committee, so you guys can all show there and, you know, you talk at committees.
I, I just feel...
Ultimately, the council, it does go to council ultimately for the final decision.
Right, right. I, I do feel, though, that, that when Deb made the motion, it was not 100%. I use the word kosher, so she was kind of interrupted and directed and so on, and I kind of feel for how the process went.
Yeah. Bob, you weren't there, but I tried to make it go back to Cow, and I was told, I, I was told I could not do that by the attorney.
No, we never said, no, I specifically, I asked that it would go to a committee, and you agreed to it during that, but...
But I, well, I don't want to...
Anyway.
It's on tape.
We can't, you can't vote at Cow anyhow, right?
No, you can't.
Cow is just discussion, there's no voting.
Well, we, we have, we do vote on things to move it in a direction.
But it's no, there's no authority at Cow. You revert things to a committee.
We're just trying to get a consensus, a consensus. We're voting on a consensus.
Correct. All right. Any more discussion on, on just a motion to reconsider?
Just, just a question.
Yes.
Can Cow make a recommendation?
Yes, so as any other committee can, but they can't enact anything.
Yeah, you send it up to council.
They have no authority of law. And? They can make a recommendation, and that's it.
As long as the majority agrees with that recommendation, then they will move it up.
Right. All right, roll call vote.
This is to reconsider.
Just to reconsider. This has nothing to do about where it's going. If it's reconsidered, then she's going to make an adjustment to her motion, and if I were a betting man, I'm getting, she's going to make her motion to change it to go to Cow versus Public Works, but...
So right now, it's just reconsideration? Okay, I vote yes.
A yes vote means reconsider.
Well, let, let the clerk go through and do a roll call.
All right, Alderman Wolf?
Yes.
Bob Hamel? Alderman Hamel?
No.
Alderman Decker?
Yes.
Alderman Schwer?
Yes.
Alderman Schrader?
Yes.
Alderman Kubaki?
No.
And Alderman Madden?
No.
It wasn't counting.
So we have, we have one, two, three, four yeses.
Okay, so now it's back on the floor. Now you can make, now you can do what you want, and anyone else can do what they want with it. So you, it's reconsidering now, so what are you going to make?
Okay, I'm, I'm making a motion that we get three bids on what to do with the old police station, and that it goes to a committee of the whole meeting, to the next committee police station, and that it goes to a committee of the whole meeting, to the next committee of the whole meeting.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All right, discussion. Let me just point out one thing. So you're not going to get, I mean, you can, it's going to take, it's going to take a long time. If you want to get three actual bids for tearing it down, for one, I doubt you get three contractors that are going to be willing to do it. What we, our plan was to do is have a reputable contractor go in there and list out what all, you know, here's what, you know, the, the asbestos, this part has asbestos, needs to be removed. The actual working process, they're essentially going, and they'll give us an estimate at that point, which was what we will bring back. If you guys want to, then after that, the committee or wherever you guys send it, that, what we get from that one contractor will create a spec sheet that we would put out to bid. It's the same process we use for everything. You will not get three contractors that are going to go in there right now and give you three bids that are comparable. So you can't, I mean, you can, we can, we can ask that to do that. I'm just telling you, they're, they're going to say, I'm, they're asking for free work, because that's what you are doing.
Asking for what?
Free work. Because they're, they know that, they're more than likely, they're, they only got a thirty-three percent chance of getting it, and there's no spec. So they're throwing, you're throwing spit at a wall at that point.
You got to come up with a plan.
When we get the, when we do this, and actually, whatever you guys do with that building, we're going to get three bids. It's just, for this part, it's not the point where you do that.
Yeah, how, how this works is, we're, we're going to line item everything. I will get you-
Wait, does anyone need finance for anything else yet, or before they run off?
No. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So I will get you the best I can cost estimate, okay, with every line item that I think that's going to be involved. Now, this also, here's your caveat, this is taking down the entire building, filling in the hole, putting back asphalt, because you can't have a gravel space there.
Because we what?
We can't have gravel.
Because?
It's our state municipal code. We can't have, you either got to grass it, or we got to have a parking lot.
So I thought it was like, there's not, the green space doesn't apply to us?
Or do you want to have a green space inside? We have a choice. And we can get an all, when we get to that point, when we get to a point, you got to fill it with something. So either way, we can do an alternate bid of parking lot or not, but you're going to have a-
Well, okay, then I get a little direction. When we cost estimate, I'm taking down the whole building. I'm not just taking down part of it. I'm taking down everything, okay? I'm filling back in the hole. I am going to fill the hole in, and then I'm going to put asphalt over the top to make it all parking lot. Well, I want to say, does, does it, does that sound right for everyone? Because we have a parking lot around there. Do you want it, or do you want me to then take it all off and make it just green space?
Because then you're removing existing parking lot. Then you're removing existing parking lot.
I, I, I just needed, as a cost estimate, to-
So if ours aren't there, we can't leave?
You could, but you have a hole in the middle.
What do you want to do in the middle? You got to understand, parking lot's going to be all around, and there's going to be a hole. So you got to, like, do you understand what I'm saying? I like, either I got to make it back in asphalt, or do you want me just to make it back and just put grass?
Before you go all in this, but let's just go back to your, the motion that she's made, and we have a second, too, as far as the three bids. The reason we don't, you're not going to get three bids to have this happen, what we need to do is have one go in there and give us a, a, a really good estimate of what it's going to cost. So you have an idea of what it's going to be, which we create a spec sheet out that, so everyone can give us a bid apples to apples.
Can, can I ask, do we not already have a spec sheet from an old bid that was done?
No, we got an estimate of, a rough estimate, that's what I've said in a number of meetings. We got to give you a rough estimate. We had a company come in, and they gave us a range.
They gave us, yeah.
They gave us a range with a lot of caveats of, like, this does not include asbestos, or this, and that, and that, you know, so-
You have to create probably, I'm assuming, like, a five-page plan sheet. Here's existing utilities, here's existing location, here's taking it down all the way. If you would choose to put, like, grass, you need spec.
Okay, so stop right there. Is it the same company that would take the building down and then do asphalt and, or-
Oh, no, they-
Yeah, exactly. So it's going to be different companies anyway, correctly?
No, we're getting all that stuff. I, I'm getting a line item cost for all that different things. So when someone bids it, they'll have a main person that'll bid it, and then he'll have subs to do all that work. So I'm giving you, like, the best cost estimate that you're asking for.
Yeah.
If you do this without getting all the information that Rick is talking about, without getting all the details, is it even possible to get an honest quote? Because we won't know what the variables are.
No one's going to give you an honest quote until they publicly bid it. I'm, I'm, I'm going to be honest with you. They're going to work with us to get something for a cost estimate, so that I can give it to you, and then you guys can decide how much this is, this is pretty close to what it's going to be to cost to take it down.
Alderman Kubaki?
We do have something from Romans' grading.
Yeah.
That we got a long time ago. And y'all have it, you got it in a packet a couple months ago. And he came up with a cost of three hundred and forty thousand dollars, not including asbestos or other hazardous removal, universal waste removal, silt fence, existing asphalt pavement, and forty other items on the back of the sheet. My question is, we just went through a budget where we don't have the money-
Right.
-to take the building down. Why are we even talking about this? The mayor wants to mothball the building, let it sit? We don't have money to do this anyway. Why are we wasting all our time screwing around with this? Is my question.
And that's what I was going to say, too, because it's not going to happen until 2026, the earliest maybe. You know, who knows? Because we don't have the money to do anything.
With all due respect, I'm asking for an, a bid, a better, more concise, like, he's talking about line item bid.
Well, how long are bids good for?
Probably thirty-six.
Or quote, whatever, not even a bid.
Yeah, so, well, why are we giving a bid when it's not going to be good and we're not doing the work next year?
We don't know that for sure. We just know-
It's not in the budget.
But, but haven't we been told that this costs us a hundred thousand dollars a year just to keep it going with-
But that's not as cold storage. That's not as, using it as cold space. You know, if we use it as cold storage, we can turn everything off to the building, but-
Electricity.
Electricity.
And electricity is only going to be, you're only paying for what you do.
And insurance.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Again, I think we're, we're getting ahead of ourselves, because I'm just asking.
That's what I said before, by getting the bid, so.
We need to know that price, too.
Yeah.
Insurance. So if we, if we did what Deb wants, the bidders would walk the thing and put their price together.
If you, 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 no. You're going to get one, if you do, if you try to get three bidders, they're going to come through with three different, you're not, you have nothing to compare it to. You're better off doing like we do with every project, where we create a spec sheet that then you have bidders bid on.
Why can't we create our own spec sheet?
We don't have experts in house that can tell you what's asbestos, what's-
Yeah, just liabilities, I think. Some of that would be liabilities.
Do we have anything in, that, like, environmental services for-
No, no, no. We don't have, like, a TerraCon or anything like that, a staff member in house that's going to have to do a phase one on the thing and go through and tell you all. I mean, that's all part of what we're talking about, having prepared for you for, hopefully, the twenty-
Environmental issues could be a terrible thing. Could be.
Could be. It could be nothing.
It could be nothing. It could be. You're exactly right.
It's not, it's, it's, the building was built at a time where it could have gone either way. I mean, I guarantee there's some asbestos in there.
I, I, I'm going to get, the plan is Public Works to get you a little bit better cost estimate than, than what Romans gave you.
No, no one wants to turn this into a community center right now. We're not planning on that, either way. We are, here's, here's just some cold truths on this thing. We are using it for storage that would eventually have to be replaced somewhere, or some, or equipment moved to other cold storage, which is not as convenient. That's without a, there's no argument on that. The other part is, there is a line item in our budget that we had to increase for eighteen thousand. That recreation does use it for rain days, which wouldn't cost us anything if it's, if it's just sitting there at least for one more summer. Saves us eighteen thousand dollars in our operating budget next year that we had increased, because she now, for her hundred thousand dollars in revenue that she gets for this program, has to go out and rent some, or have arrangements with some other place that when it rains, she can take these kids there. So, I mean, there, there is twofold on just, just cold storaging the building. There's a, there's, it's not the worst thing. I just don't like paying the heating and upkeep and everything else for the thing every year, but, you know, keeping it hooked up so the sump pumps run and it doesn't flood, and give us time to decide how you want to tear it down, makes more sense.
Excuse me, is that the line item that I asked you about, about the rec department asking for an extra fifteen thousand dollars?
I don't believe so, because it's eight.
That you're talking about?
Is it contracted services? You know what? It might, that might be. I can confirm that.
Okay, it could, I, maybe.
You know what? You might be right.
I just haven't-
So let me clarify, then.
Yeah.
Why is she asking for that when the building hasn't been torn down and there's no plans to tear it down?
Because the plan was, as of last meeting, we added this to the budget after the last meeting, because the plan was to tear it down, and your original motion was by March first or whatever you had thrown out there. But I, we have to plan in case you guys do tear it down.
We have to plan that that building's gone.
Right.
So if you, again, there's a, there's a thing. If you're saying the building's not gone, that's eighteen thousand saving.
Well, well, that's confusing, since you didn't know what that was a few minutes ago, and now all of a sudden you know.
Well, because I have it, I just have a lump sum number on my notes. I'm sorry.
I'm confused.
The thing is, is-
I'm confused, more and more, as time goes on.
That's Tammy who put that in there. It only dawned on us where that number was up. Okay, now it makes sense. I, I'm sorry, I, I don't know all of her budget numbers. I mean, I have a pretty good sum of the ones I do. I don't know.
Tammy could have answered that right away.
Yeah, she would have, she would have told you right away. I, I'm sorry, she's just not here, and I, I don't know her budgets that well.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any other discussion on this? So the motion right now is to, to refer to committee of the whole, bring back three bids on tearing it down. That is the motion that is made and the seconded. So we've told you about, you know, if we, the possibility of getting bids or not, so you guys do what you want. All right, roll call vote, roll call vote.
All right. Alderperson Wolf?
Yes.
Can you, I'm sorry, could you restate what we're voting on this?
The motion, the motion is to refer to the committee of the whole, the tearing down of the old police department building, and bringing back to the committee of the whole three bids for the cost of tearing it down, correct?
Yes.
And they're telling us it's going to cost fifteen thousand to get that number. Is that correct?
No.
Oh, okay.
No. No, to get the number shouldn't cost us anything.
Okay.
You, you might get one. I don't know.
Well, no, we're only trying to get one. We're trying to create a spec sheet. Oh, you mean, if you ask, yeah, see, if you ask, if this motion passes and you want three bids, we may only get one. I, I doubt you get three, but you may. But that's the motion.
We, we will try to get you everything you ask, but until you publicly bid it, and again, even if you publicly bid it, you're not even guaranteed three bids, just, just to let you know, okay? But what we're going to get is as much we can, with contractors coming in, giving us a different cost for, for simple things. And, and again, why I say simple things is-
All right, I think we got that.
Yeah.
All right. Roll call vote.
Alderman Wolf?
Yes.
Alderman Hamel?
No.
Alderman Decker?
Yes.
Alderman Schwer?
Yes.
Alderman Schrader?
Yes.
Alderman Kubaki?
No.
And Alderman Madden?
No.
Four yeses and three noes.
All right, we'll do our best.
Scott has a question.
I'm on vacation, ten twenty-two, November twelfth. Can I get it? And I'll be honest-
We are not going to have this for the next committee. It's coming back to the committee of the whole. It is not coming back for the next one.
I, I, I'm seriously, I need some time to get, these bids are-
It'll come back to a committee of the whole. It is not, we will schedule it as soon as possible, but that I'm not going to give you-
I'm fine with November twelfth.
Well, I'm not promising any date. I will get it to you as soon as possible. We should by, by, before October, or the twelfth, we should be able to.
Okay.
I'm not promising. If we don't have what you're asking for, I'm not going to schedule